Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for April 7th at 6:30. We have a—Matthew is online today, so we have a bit of a hybrid. So we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands on the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll have reading in the mail, a board update, a one-day liquor license for dirigible, school department requesting us—the a statement of interest for the MSBA grant for roof replacement, two actions from Human Resources around a Veterans Agent, a discussion on the Long Lake Safety Zone, Charter Committee update, and the election warrant. Then we'll have a joint meeting with Affordable Housing Trust, public input. 7:50 we'll discuss the Annual Town Meeting update and assign all the actions to the people that aren't here. 8:35 we'll approve minutes from the February 12th and March 24th meeting, and we'll adjourn around 8:40. So, thank you. Send over the mail.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got some open appointments on different commissions. We've got Agricultural Commission, Conservation, Cultural Council, Economic Development, Historical Commission, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and one appointment by the school committee, which would be for the Finance Committee. Sign up for public—to receive public notifications for the town of Littleton. Register to go to www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Stay informed, community impacts, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events, town meeting changes, public safety activity. We have a gift acceptance form from Liz Trediac of EHS. The name of the party offering the gift is Hal Arthur and the amount of $1,000 for the new building gift fund. Thank you very much, Mr. Arthur. And we also have an update on the second competition for the Littleton Robotics. And they were—they came in—they came home as number-one seed after qualification matches—the runner-up in the elimination tournament for—after exciting finals match against a very high-performing alliance. So we wished them the best of luck and their continued success moving forward. Outstanding. And—pictures, pictures, pictures. And that's it.
Department of Dirigible, one-day liquor license request. So this is for Patriot's Day.
Patriot's Day, correct. The time is—it's Saturday, April 19th, from 11:00 to 3:00.
Do you want to read the motions?
Sure.
They're there or—
Yeah. Let me look at the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, to issue a special license, also known as a one-day liquor license, to Colin Knuck and Christopher Loring of Dirigible Brewing Company, LLC, for wine and malt beverages to be served during the 250th anniversary community event on Saturday, April 19th, 2025, between the hours of 11:00 and 3:00.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor, Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Marks and aye. And just as a quick update, to simplify the process of these one-day liquor licenses going forward, we've actually reached out to Town Council, and we can authorize Jim to sign these going forward. He can basically approve these on his own. He cannot deny them without our permission, so I think at our next meeting, we're going to have a discussion about that.
Great.
So, the statement of interest about the MSBA, the replacement of the high school roof and boilers.
Let me take that. Sure, sure. So, if you may recall, during our budget process, we identified a couple of capital projects that may be suitable for a—we have our main MSBA project, program where we're going to be asking for money from the Shaker Lane renovation or rebuild. This is a separate project for renovation of the high school roof and two boilers. So, as Steve Mark, the school business administrator, often says, he tells people that the school's over 20 years, they kind of find it hard to believe, but yes, we are at that point, and the roof is in need of replacement. So part of the plan that we talked about with the Finance Committee and the Select Board at that time during the budget cycle was to apply for this grant. So what this is, is a formal request. Similar vote will need to be taken by the school committee to move forward with a statement of interest to participate in this rehabilitation program for, again, the high school roof and the boiler. So, as part of that is a long motion that we have in front of you, so that we need to formally do that and have the town clerk also sign off on this and basically say that —you actually voted this. So, again, just following through on the plan that we had already discussed with you.
Any questions or discussion?
No.
Okay. I'll read the motion. Having convened in an open meeting on April 7th, 2025, prior to the Statement of Interest, SOIs, submission closing date of April 11th, 2025, the Select Board of the Town of Littleton, Mass., in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the Littleton Superintendent of Schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 31st, 2025, for the Littleton High School located at 56 King Street, Littleton, Mass., 01460, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the prior categories for which an application may be submitted to the Mass. School Building Authority in the future. Priority category five is for the replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roof, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation system to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Littleton is looking to replace the high school roof and the two high school cast-iron boilers. The Littleton Select Board hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the warding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Littleton to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Moved by me, said—ended by Matthew. Roll call, Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Marks and aye. And it's very convenient, Matthew, that when there's a long motion here, that you're absent.
I planned—I planned it that way, and I hope my plan is coming together.
Okay. Next. Human Resources.
Good evening. Michelle Vibert, Human Resources Director. In front of you is a pretty straightforward request for a Veterans Agent job description. This position did exist, but we did not have an individual job description spelling out essential functions, supervisory role, all of that good stuff. So, we have in front of you the approval of the actual job description itself, and then with the retirement of our current Veterans Agent, we are looking at ramping up the programs and events that the Veterans Agent is in charge of, which will require more hours needed for this position. So we are looking to transfer this position from Schedule B to Schedule A, our permanent full and part-time employees. With this, I do want to let you know that the position will remain not benefits-eligible.
Any questions? Comments?
I assume the Personnel Board has approved this, or the Advisory Committee?
Yes. So the Personnel Advisory Committee met on March 20th, and their recommendation was to place this position on grade nine on Schedule A.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments?
No.
My only comment on the job description, it's not in any—any of the substance of it. I was wondering if, like, where it says act as a Veterans Agent, it has a bunch of bullet points. Can we move the ones that are more, like, veteran-specific higher in the list? Because right now, it's things like reports to the town administrator and things that are kind of more fluffier things, whereas the part that's interacting with the veterans is, like, down towards the end. So it would just be better if we rearranged it.
You can do that.
It's not changing any of the content, it's just the format. So. Any other?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the proposed job description for the Veterans Agent.
Aye, second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Matthew. Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Marks and aye.
Another vote. Second vote.
The other part of that.
Yeah.
And move that the Select Board vote to approve the request to move the Veterans Agent position from Schedule B to Compensation Plan Schedule A, permanent full and part-time employees at grade nine.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor, Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Marks and aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Long Lake Safety Zone.
Mr. Chairman, you were going to take out of order, take G.
Yeah, item G.
Oh, item G, I'm sorry. Yeah, right. The election warrant. We're going to let you go home early.
Thank you. Diane Correa, Town Clerk, before you, Mark, you have the election warrant, which I would appreciate if you would approve and vote to sign. It's the long eight-and-a-half-by-fourteen paper.
Underneath everything, Mark.
You put everything on top of it?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay.
It is for our election on May 10th.
Okay. Any questions?
No. All right. Move that the Select Board vote to post the election warrant for the May 10th, 2025 town election.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor, Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Marks and aye. Okay. Now we can do the Long Lake. Let Diane go home.
Rob Brown, 25, Juniper Road. Thank you for letting me speak to you about this tonight. I'm going to start off featuring—and I hope I don't owe the million dollars. If Thula could raise her right hand and say she did this, don't know if you'll get the screen, but she presented this to me. I'm fearful of NIL in light of NCAA tonight. I mean, it could be big bucks, but I'm willing to take the risk. It says, "Don't drive too fast, be careful, slow down." That's basically the theme, and so she captured it with that. I'll just ask you to vote. All right. So, the three of you have spent considerable time with me on this topic, so you know it. So I'm going to attempt to move through the first few pages and more or less get to comments. So Ryan, if you can—I'll just say, the first page, there was a town vote, it passed several years ago, 2017, to be specific. That's the one that most of the people in Littleton know, was the one that authorized the Select Board to adopt the 25 mile per hour, you know, with no posting in a thickly settled area. What I think is not known is that that same town vote empowered the Select Board to designate select roadways that meet certain conditions, but nonetheless, the Select Board to designate roadways as safety zones. 20 mile per hour is the only speed limit that can be associated with safety zone. So if you flip to the next one. There was a public hearing, actually. It was continued for a couple of times, and during the public hearings, which some of the information that you have in the packet discloses that the then Police Chief King and then Select Board member or members, they were frequently referred to the Long Lake area as an automatic. Of course, we're going to put in the safety zone. And it didn't happen, and it hasn't happened up till now, and that's why we're here tonight. I'm trying to bring out the aspect that you have the authority to do this and trying to get to motivate you to do it. So what is a safety zone? Safety zones are, as I mentioned, speed limits have to be set at 20 mile per hour. That's in the law. You can't do it, you know, any other way. They're specifically—the first bullet, they're around parks and playgrounds and somewhat other things that you expect reduced speeds. Unique, as I mentioned, is that you've got the authority to do this independent of Mass. Dot. And—that's significant because I've attended some BPAC meetings. If you were to go to them, there's almost a fear that if you ask Mass. DOT for a regulatory speed limit change, like Goldsmith right now, it's an unposted 25, but potentially, if you were to ask them, they might say, "No, raise it to 35 or 40." Now, a lot of people are driving 35 or 40 or faster there, but we almost can't risk that because we might come out with an outcome that would not be what we wanted. This situation with regard to safety zone is unique. They can't stop you. If you want to do it, you can do it. So you've got that authority. If you're familiar with Town Road, Town Road is off of Goldsmith. It leads into the Long Lake Beach parking lot. It has sidewalks, and it has an advisory speed limit of 10 miles per hour. The town has spent money placing signage on a roadway that leads to a parking lot that I know personally, and the people in the audience know, there's so few people that walk down there. It's primarily a roadway, and it gets a 10. And so I'm arguing tonight for a 20 where we get many, many people walking. Next one. What's important? Where do they apply? I think laws sometimes is vulnerable road users, pedestrians. We're sharing the roadway with trucks, delivery trucks, construction trucks, buses. It's different when you're walking and you have a car. Steve Yonley has spent considerable time with me, and I agree with him. We that walk the area feel like large vehicles speeding by us are going much faster than they actually are. It's just the size. It's just the dynamics of it, that you get throttled as you have a vehicle going that way. But nonetheless, this law is to protect vulnerable pedestrians. That's what it's all about. Lakeshore Drive, beach, lake, we have no sidewalks. One person not here tonight argues, I think he's right. I think Lakeshore Drive is the most walked roadway in Littleton. I'll move on. So this is—part of the law has to deal with destinations, and as you look at this map, we're very fortunate. Nature gave us great destination, gave us Long Lake. We're very fortunate. And then the town, at considerable expense, has created additional aspects of infrastructure, the Long Lake Beach, Frog Pond. Town's about to invest almost 200 grand in the next year to reinvigorate the wetland basin known as Frog Pond. Some people might not think of Long Lake Park where I've identified it, but you that have been here at Select Board with regard to hearing the BPAC, you know the 25-foot corridor between Lakeshore and the lake is actually called Long Lake Park. It is a park. So all these destinations, including Proudie Woods, they meet the aspect of destinations that are utilized by vulnerable pedestrians. Move on to the next one. Here's specifically what's being asked of you. In green is shown primarily its Lakeshore Drive. There's a little bit of budding portions around Frog Pond on lake and beach. I think these areas clearly meet the definition of what you're authorized to do in creating the safety zone. I have five yellow markers on the map, which are my suggested postings, but Director Yonley will have the final say with regard to the location of postings. If he thinks they should be done differently, if he thinks there should be more or less, it's all up to him, and I certainly recognize that. So tonight, I'm asking you to vote to create, designate this Long Lake Safety Zone. Your authority exists. The cost—we'll get a little bit more on this in a moment, but the cost, Steve estimates it to be $250 per posting. So we're done with five, you know? You're talking less than $2,000. If there's more, could it be $4,000? Yeah, it could. I don't know. He's going to make that call. Mark, you happened to be at the BPAC meeting, where you heard that BPAC supports this initiative, that's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Long Lake Neighborhood Association. Many of the people here are members of it. President is here. They also voted to support this request, so just wanted you to be aware of that. But that's not the only—if you can move on to the next one. That's not the only groups and people that support this. A number of people here signed, a number of people here helped me. We got a petition that basically says, "Support the Long Lake Safety Zone." I counted 139 households within the immediate area. These are all inside of Goldsmith, heading towards the lake. We got 100 households out of 139 to sign. Only six refused. That's a 72% perspective in terms of approval. Communities like that for Tufts, if they had a citizen like me who came forward with this request, they demand that—to show that the public is supporting it, they demand a 33% of the households, you know, be recognized in signing petition. We're at 72% in terms of wanting the safety zone. Here's something that I put in the deck—I didn't think I'd have to emphasize it as much. I think it's irrefutable. These are legitimate safety, accepted safety pedestrian accident standards. What they identify is really critically important, made more important as a result of Director Yonley and Police Chief Bernard's comments. Here's the stats. 16 mile per hour, pedestrian gets hit by a vehicle, one out of 10 people is going to have a significant injury. That's not where you wake up and take aspirin the next morning. It's significant. Five miles more, or at seven miles more, at 23 miles per hour, which is within the 25 mile per hour. It's actually below the 25 mile per hour, you know, right now. 2.5 people out of 10 pedestrians, if hit, significant injury. Now we go to 31 miles per hour. The data, there's currently placed just this morning yet again, a speed trailer, and it's pulling data, but right now, that speed trailer data doesn't even call a violation until you're 10 miles over the posted speed limit. In other words, unless you're 35 miles per over—over 35 miles per hour, you're not even identified as a violator. At 31 miles per hour, five out of 10, one out of two people hit, is going to have a significant injury. You see the reference with regard to traffic safety. If you wanted more, I could get you plenty more. Emily sent me a whole bunch more. So, next one. So I need to—next one, please. Oh, sorry. My apologies. So, I had to react to the comments from Director Yonley and Chief Bernard. Those comments came after my presentation was submitted for posting as part of the public posting in open law. It can't be changed. So apologize to those in the audience, but I now have to work with comments that I've given to you in writing, and Matthew, I did try to send you an email. I don't know if you've been able to see it. Just so you know what, you know, I'm trying to work from. Director Yonley, essentially, and Chief Bernard supports him, thinks that the speed data that's been gathered—I believe it's referencing November 2024 data—that averaged 18.7 miles per hour of the data collected over a seven, eight-day period, 1,405 cars. It—it was gathered, and it shows that type of speed, except that it's at the bottom of a hill. I was stunned by seeing the data. I was—I—I just generally couldn't believe it. How could people be going so slow when those of us that walk the area know that they go fast? And then I started to do a little bit of going in my car, and I put my car at the top of the hill. You have to brake in order to—as you descend, if you don't brake, you go faster than 25. I mean, that's just inertia. That's no gas whatsoever. That's just the way it is. The speed trailer, if you're familiar with it, it's got to be four or five feet, you know, wide, you know, by another five feet, six feet tall. I'd argue that those of us that see a speed trailer and start to get flashing how fast you're going, I think it's almost human nature to slow down, and yet—
I would argue with that one. A lot of people think they want to get the high score, so—
All right. So—you get the high score, you get the ticket. I actually had somebody earlier today, in light of this traffic speed trailer going put in—I won't give her up.
I think people our age slow down.
Okay. So somebody, it will remain nameless, said, "So in other words, for the next several days, we should go speeding down down there in order to raise the stats." No, please don't do that. The other thing is, it comes right at the place of an intersection, right as Emerson merges into Lakeshore Drive, and you have a right side, you know, start, which, thank you, earlier—less than a year ago, Jim and Highway Department gave us a stop sign there, and very much appreciated it. And then Steve Yonley's crew used the bylaw to remove the site obstructions. So it's much safer than it was, but the reality is, it's still an intersection, so it's natural. So this data that's showing 18.7 miles per hour, that Steve—he can make the argument, I just choose to argue differently, of he's saying, in effect, "Why do we need to post this if you're already going that slow?" I'll address a bit of it with regard to what a posting means in a moment.
Did you have a comment, Matthew? Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Sorry. I'll just say this with regard to the speed trailer data. I've tried to give you a different set, which I kind of took into consideration after Thanksgiving when I saw the data. If data like this is going to be used as being the determinant as to whether or not we need a safety zone, then I'll argue, we need a much better set of data than what we have to base this on. And one thing, you shouldn't put up with a big, you know, sign letting you know your speeders—speed is being tracked. It should be hidden. It shouldn't be known so that people aren't aware, "Oh, I might be getting in trouble," et cetera. I'll—I'll go on to Police Chief Bernard. And I want to emphasize, there are some things that I take opposition with—with Chief Bernard's comments, and there are some things that I couldn't thank him enough for saying. I'll start off with the bad part of what he said, in my opinion. And I want to emphasize, I'm reading into this a little bit, but I think the gist of his, you know, few sentences are that he seemingly doesn't support a 5 mile per hour reduction in the speed. In other words, you know, "We're going to do this just to get 5 miles per hour." The data that I showed you, that 16 mile per hour, the 23 per hour, the 31, every 5 miles per hour speed with pedestrians means something. So I would argue, yes. You know, don't be comfortable, and don't think of it as just 25 and a 20. He also mentions that he gets, quote, "Very limited calls for motor vehicle complaints." I can't believe this. My questions would be, "You really want us calling each time? Because we can." If that's what you really want in order to make the point that we need this protection to make us safer, fine. Tell us that, we'll start calling. We'll start calling with frequency. We know, because we walk it, and we know how frequently the cars are going by too fast. Then the Police Chief makes another comment. He talks about fiscal responsibility, and I'm just kind of stunned. $250 per posting. So if we need—if—if that's a determinant, then tell us, because we can do some fundraising to get a couple thousand dollars. I hope it doesn't come to that, but if that's really an argument that we need to combat, then tell us, because we can combat it. There's—there is a positive, though, in Chief Bernard's comments. He asked you to— He asked you to drive over the weekend the area 20 and a 25. I don't know if you did or not. He had, I'll admit, I wish I had the opportunity. I sought out Chief Bernard February 3rd. I waited a month. I got no response. I asked him again. "I want your feedback." Had he offered up his comments, I would have met with him and I would have discussed. Maybe others would have joined me in the discussion. We could have benefited from a good exchange. Because I feel like right now, I'm just nagging, crying, and speaking, you know, about things. But he did do some positives. I want to give him kudos for the positives. He asked you to be out there and drive it. I would have asked you to walk it. Walking it is very different than driving it. Another positive, huge positive, Mark is out here right now. He stopped over and spoke to me. He was pretty passionate about it. This was probably the single biggest argument that I had. Most of the people signed the petition, as you can see. But one of their biggest objections was, "Why bother? It's not going to be enforced." When my wife and I came here a few years ago, we found a community that loves where we are. We're lucky. But we also found a good sentiment with regard to, "Why bother? Nothing's going to be done." Some of you know some of these very issues, the changes, the stop signs, the removal of the trees. This is yet another one. The people around the area are forever talking about, "We need to reduce speeds. People are going too fast. Buses are going too fast. We're in danger. We don't feel, you know, comfortable." I've witnessed, no question, several near accidents. There was one in which I told a woman by the name of Linda, "You realize it was either you getting killed, or me being killed, or him threading the needle." Yep. That's just the way that street is. We have too many people going too fast. But what I loved about Police Chief Bernard's comments was, "If you, the select board, decide that it's worthy of being designated a 20 mile per hour, he will have his officers enforce it." And that's wonderful, because that's responsive to Mark's comment. That's responsible, responsive to a lot of other people I spoke with that say, "Nothing's going to be done anyhow, so why should we bother?" If Police Chief Bernard can get the enforcement, I believe the public, when we see the school crossing with the yellow signs blinking, I believe we slow down. I think we actually pay attention to that. I think if a safety zone is there, it stands out, because quite frankly, we don't have speed limits posted. So now if you see a posting that says 20 mile per hour safety zone, I would hope that it would mean something like a school crossing. I would hope that the police will enforce it at the 20. Not a, as exists today, 25 plus 10, where we're in significant danger, but rather as a 20, like a school zone crossing. Because I don't think you can get away with a 20 plus 10 on a school zone crossing. So with that, I hope you use your authority. I'm asking you to create this. I recognize that I'm criticizing the data point. You've got every right to say, "Maybe we should get some more data." But if you look in a bit deeper at the data, you'll see there are numerous cars that are going through in excess of 25 miles per hour. Reduce it to 20, there's even more cars going through faster. You can help us. You can make us safer, feeling safer, so that more of us want to gather and walk along this beautiful area. So please, thank you.
Do you want to start, or you want to?
Are we taking comments, or?
Let's have a discussion.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for all the time you've spent on this. I know it was an extraordinary amount of time and I appreciate it. And I'm sure your neighbors do as well. And thanks to everybody who came out to advocate for this. You mentioned threading the needle, and that's sort of where I am on this. If a traffic study is supposed to be part of what we consider and if the traffic study doesn't indicate that it's needed, then I think we need to pay attention to that. I am concerned that in a town the size of Littleton, with all the fantastic trails we have and all the great places where people love to walk, that the entire town could become a safety zone. I recognize, though, that there's a couple of things here that, to me, distinguish this case from a brand new case. And one of, this isn't brand new. As you pointed out, this was discussed years ago and it had support back then. And I think that matters a lot. Fiscal responsibility is an interesting question. Traffic studies, I don't think, are free. So, you know, if we're weighing the cost of implementing the safety zone versus another traffic study to see if we really want it, if we've got the right research, I don't think that that makes sense, as far as I'm concerned, because I'm leaning towards the safety zone anyway. So.
Can I address?
Sure.
Thank you. A couple of things. And I'll admit to being capable of being wrong. However, the traffic study that Director Yanley is referring to deals with where postings will be placed, not the legitimacy, as I put in like the third or fourth page. You have the authority without Mass DOT. The traffic study is only, as I understand it, required with regard to placement of postings, not validation like a proposal that could be brought forward with regard to, "Let's change Goldsmith from 25 miles per hour down to 20, or let's change something else from 35 down to 30," or something like that. Those all require a traffic study with regard to the actual speed limits. You have the authority to designate the safety zone.
I understand that.
There's a posting aspect that requires the study, except, I was able to speak with somebody from the MAPC Transportation Department just one week ago, and she dismissed, now, I wasn't paying her thousands of dollars, so I'm not going to give up her name, and she could walk away from the statements. I don't think she would, but she could walk away. And she, when I brought up Steve's point, because he had made it to me, "We might need a $5,000, two-day traffic study that was recommended," she dismissed it as, "For what? For a quarter of a mile roadway? That you're changing from a 25 to 20?" She almost said, "How absurd. I'll offer up further." At like Tufts, or Harvard, or MIT, they have over 500 roadways that are at 20 mile per hour safety zones. Do you think they spent $5,000 per roadway as we would seemingly be required? So Steve's the expert, but I don't think we have experience in this. And what is written as the law, I'm going to give you another example, I found isn't necessarily so. With respect to your concern that other roadways may become similar to this one with requests for a safety zone, a component that is before you that you do need to meet, or should meet, is it needs to be a minimum of a quarter mile. Lake Shore Drive meets that. When I threw that question to Mass DOT Traffic Engineer, Richard Wilson, I gave him specifically, these people know it, Emerson Drive. I said, "It fails to meet the quarter of a mile, so we can't get that one, even though it's directly, you know, along Long Lake, et cetera." He put in writing, and it's in your packet, saying, "No, the quarter of a mile isn't required." My point in connecting these things is that if a quarter of a mile that's stated in the regulation isn't required, then is a traffic study to deal with postings with regard to where they would be placed within the safety zone, will that be required? I don't know the answer to that. I do respect Director Yanley, who made the point. But I think that it's not necessary. And so I just want to offer you up those aspects of how the law as it's written appears to not be the law as it needs to be executed, and hence we may not have this traffic study required. With regard to the quarter mile, I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. If it's, if I say it's not necessary, then how does it preclude others from coming before you to say, "I have a trailhead and I want a safety zone"? I think that you can make significant distinction between all the destinations that connect Lake Shore Drive from one end to the other. And I'd offer that up as my comment, so thank you.
So my point wasn't that it's required by law. My point was that it's there and it's objective data, and I think it's important to take all objective data into consideration. Whether it's required or not, I don't want to argue about back and forth, because I don't think, for me, I don't need to.
Okay.
Do you have comments, Matthew?
I'm not sure. I've heard a good argument against doing this. I'm not sure that the fiscal argument really holds up. I don't think that $1,250 is, you know, that's one ambulance run for someone who gets hit by a car on Long Lake, on Lake Shore Drive. I also think, I understand the fear of this being, setting precedent for other places in town. But we all know that Long Lake in the summer is basically a, you know, there's kids everywhere. It's super chaotic. We have school zones that are 20 miles an hour for a reason. So I would vote for it tonight. I would also be okay with waiting for Gary and Chuck to weigh in, but I don't, I haven't heard a good reason to not do this. It feels like it's almost free and just a general benefit.
Okay. So I generally support the safety zone. We've had several discussions about it. Your original plan was much larger. I wasn't in favor of that. What you have now, I can get behind, with some caveats. I don't know that five signs is the right number, right? I don't know where they go. I would say that those are, should be left up to Mr. Yanley to decide how many and where they're placed. I think there's actually, ends up being probably more signs, because you have to have them going both directions and places and things too, so. But I'm generally okay with this. I will caution you that I don't know how much benefit you're really going to see, because it's mainly all of you that are driving in that area, right? It's not a through fare. It's not people coming from outside of the neighborhood that are generally going through. And so, where you're coming to or from.
Well, let me share, I can do it in less than a minute. Arguably, I just walked out of this household giggling to myself. In the first 10 to 15 seconds when I knocked on some people's doors, I can sense whether they're going to sign the petition or not. This gentleman opened the door. I couldn't get him a read. About 20 seconds, I knew who he was. And then within the first and second minute, this guy was full-blown ecstatic with regard to signing the petition to, you know, 20 mile per hour safety zone. So ecstatic that his wife, who was not into you and never came into you, he said, "Here, this young man, why don't you come and sign this petition? I just signed for 20 mile per hour safety zone." And she cut him to the quick. She said, "You stupid old man, you've never driven 25 miles per hour in your life. You're going to go to jail."
It could have been.
So do we want to open it up to anyone? If we want to come on up, state your name and address and...
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello. Tess Deegan. I am the president of the Long Lake Neighborhood Association. And I am very confident that I'm speaking for most of our members. As you heard, a few of them did not sign the petition, but more, almost everybody else did, and then more people on top of that. Ellen and I voted on this in October, that we would support the petition. And, but we had not seen the data that you referred to, because I just saw that for the first time this morning. But I'm still very confident that we support this. The safe, the speed, the speeding around, especially Lake Shore Drive, comes up at every single meeting. It is constantly mentioned. It's a great concern. Lake Drive and Beach Drive are also a concern, because children, especially in the summer, run in and out of Frog, the Frog Pond area. There's no crosswalks. The beach access is right there. It is quite dangerous and very disconcerting. I want to point out that, like Rob pointed it out too, that the trailer is a large shed-like thing, and, you know, at the side of the road. And yes, it does give us data, but we are the humans walking on that road and we are on the street. The trailer is off the street, right? So we feel a very, there's a very different thing when something passes us too close. Even at times at 20 miles an hour, it feels like you're in peril. You feel very vulnerable. I would argue that this is data. We are the people with the data. We walk, we are responsible for dogs. We are responsible for children. Some of us are not very mobile any longer. So I would argue that these signatures give you data of the need in the neighborhood to make the vulnerable road participants feel safer and acknowledge that the area around the lake is a destination, is a park. And I would argue, and you heard the grumble, that while there are probably some neighbors that drive a little bit fast to get out of the neighborhood or drive it back into the neighborhood, most of my fear is related to trucks, trash, buses, and people I don't recognize. You know, quick deliveries. Yeah. So thank you so much for considering. I urge you to vote in favor. And I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
George Sand, the sixth head in two great ruin. Mr. Chairman, I wasn't going to speak on this matter, but after the presenter gave so much data there with regards to, and the number of people that came out here tonight with regards to this matter. You know, you cannot put a price on life. When life is lost, it's lost. You can't bring it back. And we're talking about it in a recreation area, where we're going to have children, once school is out, and the swimming and everything else and activities that's going on down there in that area. I find no reason why we as citizens in this town does not take a stand to understand we need to be concerned about our young folks. They have a tendency to run and get into the street and so forth. Why wouldn't we want to take and put some protection in place? Because the federal government says that there are more people that are being killed as pedestrians and pedestrian crossing. That's why they're encouraging states to lower the speed limit and put in more crossings for pedestrians with lights, so people will get that attention that they need to slow down. So I say here tonight that I think that I'm appreciative of hearing two members on this board supporting that you can see some good into what these people that came forth here tonight and is asking you to do for them. We are the people of this town. And if we don't care for each and every one of ours, who else is going to do it? Nobody else. It's us. And we need to do what we can that is not going to cause harm. And as long as we can save from causing harm, there's nothing better. I thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, Mr. Porter.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Bill Porter. I live at 215 Goldsmith Street, and I've been there for 21 years. As you can see by the way I came, I do have a visual impairment. I'm actually a legally blind citizen, but I also have this unique situation where sensually I have very acute vision. I just only have about 15%. So I have no peripheral vision. I walked through that community and have walked down Beach Road, because I live adjacent to Beach, and around Lake Shore Drive nearly every day for the past 21 years, certainly with my kids and my dogs. At this rate, I do it twice a day with my dog. What I, I agree with some of the statements and concerns about how much this could or not impact it. I do support the measure, and this, I did not sign the petition. I wasn't aware of it. I just sort of found out about this, but I do support it, because I think it'll help get us in the right direction. But, you know, I think what's the most valuable thing is, I think slowing the speed would be great, but the most valuable part is the signage. I think just having some visual cues there for drivers to be slow and cautious is really important. I am most intimately aware of one particular troubling spot. It's closest to where I live. It's that corner of Beach and Lake Shore Drive. That is probably one of the most scariest places that I know of. As someone with no peripheral vision, my greatest fear is getting hit by a car or dying. This is a very real and serious fear for me and for obvious reasons. And so I'm very cautious and careful walking through that area, but as I walk down that road coming towards Beach, cars whip around that car corner really fast. It may only be 25 miles per hour, but they don't slow down or stop. And because it's a logistical thing, I get why it happens. It's the end of Lake Shore Drive, and it's an adjacent street that's a nine-degree angle, but they treat it like one road and just sort of whip around the corner. And I've seen many near accidents, and I'm shocked there hasn't been some major tragedies. And I just know it's, it's coming. So that particular area, I think when they're considering this and looking at it, that's a real trouble spot, particularly because it's the most high-traffic area. We're fortunate now to have a nice stone path that goes across the beach that leads to that spot, and then there's a stone path right across from it that goes to the Frog Pond. A lot of people cross right through that intersection. And so one thing I would want to add with the Frog Pond renovation being considered and this is, I just want to add one comment that could be a real cheap fix that could solve as much as any of these things, is to put a crosswalk in right there. There's literally just one path on one side of the street, one path on the other. People walk through there. Just two strips of white paint would slow people down on that intersection, I think. And if we have the signs in addition to go slow or slow corner or whatever's most appropriate there, that could potentially save my life, my dog's life, my children's life. And so, thank you for your time.
Hi. I'm Amanda Fox. I live at 28 Juniper Road. So I walk my dog around there twice a day. I'm five months pregnant. We're really excited for our new baby. But my grandmother did pass away by getting struck by a vehicle, so I just wanted to say that it's very real, and anything we can do to help our neighborhood be safer, I'd love to do that.
My name's Sarah Foss. I live at four Cedar, and I sent an email today. I hope you received it. I wasn't sure I'd be able to attend. The roads in our neighborhood are small and narrow, and often there are people going in both directions, either walking or driving, and it's a real easy thing to see somebody step out, excuse me, and get struck. I watch from my house and in my travels. My neighbor had headset on one day cutting her lawn, and she walked right out in front of me. This needs to be addressed before something very tragic happens.
Hi. I'm Jen Klein. I live at two Dogwood Road. I've lived there 14 years. I didn't become invested in this issue until I had children about 10 years ago, and around that time, I actually bought on Amazon a $10 signs, 10 of them, and sold them to my neighbors that said, "Drive like your kids live here." And so I really relate to my neighbor here who's having a baby, because she's going to be walking her child, and those roads are dangerous. I also walk my son a mile to Shaker Lane School on occasion, and I don't feel safe with my kids because they don't walk on the side, and there's no sidewalk to walk on, and these are small roads. So I am strongly in favor of this. I have been for a long time. I do think that a slower speed limit will help with the buses, delivery drivers, trucks, like, like my neighbors are saying.
Okay. So how do we want to proceed on this? I, I'm fine voting on it. I'm fine. Since we don't have two members here, I, we could table this and vote on it next time. I don't think it's going to change my mind on how I'm voting, but I'm asking what everyone else, the pleasure of the board...
Yeah, I'm happy to vote for it, and I'm happy to let Gary and Chuck have their say.
I'm inclined to vote for it, so that makes, that would mean that it would pass. The only reason not to do it would be if Gary or Chuck had a compelling argument against it, which, which only seems fair. I do want to, just to be cognizant of the time we spent on this, you know, if we, if we revisit this, it's not going to be fair to Rob to have him come back and present it all, nor will, nor will that be time efficient. So if we do postpone it, we'd have to ask Gary and Chuck to review the materials ahead of time.
So would you rather postpone it, Matthew, or vote on it, or your...
I think I'd rather postpone it. I'm pretty sure that it will pass, but I, you know, I think it's only fair to Chuck and Gary to let them have their say on something like this. I will also, if you decide, I will vote for it tonight.
So I appreciate, and so as you know, I've spent most of my time with the three of you that are here tonight. I did have one discussion with Gary, and his comment, which I recognize you have to take my word for it, his comment was, "Why wouldn't we do this?" I'm inclined to say, "Why wouldn't we do this?" That was his soundbite. Chuck's soundbite at the end of your last select board meeting was, "You're waiting for my feedback." I said, "Yep." And he said, "What I want to know is that the residents support it." I think you've seen that demonstrated. Again, these are what I can offer up, because like I've spent time with you, I approach Gary and I approach Chuck. So not to be saying that they wouldn't be swayed by other matters that are legitimate concerns, but I want you to know what the feedback has been given to me as I pursued this offline with them. Thank you.
I'm going to go out on a limb and posit that Rob is not lying to us, and then I would... that we vote, vote, vote on this item tonight.
So I, I appreciate what you said, Rob, and I appreciate everyone coming out, and I'm, I'm kind of torn on this, whether we should vote on it or not, because I'm pretty sure it's going to pass whether we vote on it tonight or at a future meeting. Having said that, I also feel that we had our conversation about it and they didn't, right? And I'm kind of torn on whether to be respectful to them, to allow them to weigh in, or whether we should just vote it, because I'm in favor of this. I'm not trying to say not to vote for it, because I'm not. I'm just wondering if we want to hear, allow them to go on the record with their position.
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, I'm reading tea leaves, but I don't think anybody's going to be changing their vote. I think it's going to pass, but I, we do have precedent that if members aren't here, that out of, you know, collegiality, we let folks, you know, we let our colleagues say something, have an opportunity to say something. But again, I don't think it's about whether anybody's lying. I think it's just about what we've done in the past and...
So even if it was, Mr. Chairman, even if it was voted tonight, we still have some, some work to do with DPW. If you postpone the vote, we can do that work, understanding that there is, there are three supporters here. We could do that legwork in the meantime to make sure that on the 22nd, we are prepared when the official vote comes down that we've, Mr. Yonley has identified the locations, and we have a schedule of when the signs will be put up, if, to do the legwork, you know, in the meantime, if that's okay with you.
Does that, I mean, I'm, I'm leaning towards postponing the vote, just to give them, say, "I'm telling you all, I'm fairly confident you're going to get your wish," but out of respect to our other members, and in the past when people have not been able to attend, we have delayed votes for their benefit, so, yep.
So I appreciate your consideration and where you're leaning or saying you intend to vote, et cetera. I understand the, you know, the reasons for postponing. Is it disappointing? It is. For a lot of us here, not going to come back. Yes, I will come back. Here's the part that I'd ask with regard to Jim resolving the DPW issues and other aspects. I was blindsided on Friday. I had given up on attempting to get the police chief's comments. I don't think it would be appropriate for me to be blindsided in the next meeting the way I was blindsided in this one. So I feel very goodwill with Jim, with DPW Yonley. I'll even say, "Please, Police Chief Bernard, if you have comments, I'll be happy to speak with you. Others would be happy to speak with you." But what, I had to scramble a good bit to get these people here, and just scrambled to add some pages that couldn't be put up on the screen. I don't think much like you're trying to be respectful to your other two members that aren't here tonight, I'd like you to be respectful to the residents that have come forward.
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate everyone coming out. But I do think we should postpone this until we have the full board, just out of respect for our colleagues here. I don't expect, you're all welcome to come back at our next meeting. We'll put it on as early in the agenda as we can. I expect you're going to get your wish, but I think we should delay the vote until the other two members are here. I apologize that they're not here. One's got a work emergency and the other one is laid up in bed. So we will take this up at our next meeting and I, as early as we can. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Charter.
Joint meeting.
We don't... Just to get...
So we just need to mention it, though?
So the charter committee update was being driven by Gary, and he's not here to fill in what he wanted to drive, so we're going to skip over that. And we'll go into affordable housing. Are you officially in session?
Madam Chair, do you want to sign this before or after please? This is the Habitat. Of course, no, of course. Ask me here, everyone.
Hello. Thank you very much for having the Affordable Housing Trust here this evening to provide an update. So in your updated packet around page 84, you have three documents. There is a one-page update, looks like this, and then financials and the project log. We were last in front of you in August of 2023, and FinCom was with us at that time, and since then, we have taken many actions, one of which was to actually create an action plan for the Affordable Housing Trust. So that action plan is currently available out on the town website, and it has the goals that the Affordable Housing Trust is, is looking to reach. And so the very first goal that we have to talk about is the procurement of funding for the Affordable Housing Trust and its projects, and Dr. Angus Michaels is going to speak about that.
Good evening. Angus Michaels, 61 Dahlia Drive. I want to give a little historical perspective as to why we're here. In October 2017, the Affordable Housing Trust was created through a special town meeting. And from 2017 to 2024, the Affordable Housing Trust has run on funds, on CPA funds through the CPC, and I would say have managed frugally and built up a certain amount of reserve. Now, there was a FinCom audit or review sometime in August of 2023. Did I say 2024? I go back. It's 2023. And FinCom made some recommendations, I, I guess because they felt that the trust had significant, significant amount of funds that are unaccounted for but in reserve in their name. So there was a request for more information on projects, a recommendation to make specific requests for specific projects, a request for funds made if approved to be through new agreements that are authorized at town meeting. And the Affordable Housing Trust is today happy to report that we are at this meeting today because we're in compliance with those recommendations and requests. So in furtherance of goal number one, between September 2023 and March 2025, the trust has been able to procure funding for Affordable Housing Trust projects. We formalized a funding agreement with the Community Preservation Committee as requested by the, by FinCom, enabling future funding requests for affordable housing initiatives. We also secured expert technical assistance from MHP for the Durkey House, Durkey Farm House project and parcel 260 on Foster Street, increasing prospects for success. Currently, we are working with the MHP, and in the fall, we found that the Durkey could house about 18 units of affordable housing. We did reach out to the MHP, MHP for technical assistance, and were given assurance that we have a strong project and prospects for seeking out better funding sources. And my colleagues will continue from here.
Good evening. I'm Bartlet Harvey, 32 Lake Warren Drive. We can, have, the Housing Trust contributed to the purchase of the conservation land at the Mary Brown property off of Tehadawan. We received a building lot. We have been negotiating with Habitat for Humanity to build a duplex, two units there. I believe the contract is, has been signed or is about to be signed, so that is underway. We have also acquired the Durkey Farm property for, of five acres, which has a house which is not in great shape. It has a barn which is in very good shape, and five acres of property. We are sending out a, making an RFP for, to get proposals to the development, for the development of those two buildings and the land. We expect that we can get somewhere around 18 or 20 bedrooms septic system on the property, which would allow us to put three or four units in the barn and to build a building in addition, about three or four units. We have done, we, the, the protests to determine approximately the size of a possible septic system, and we have had the, one of the property lines surveyed and marked. There's the houses on Balsam Lane back up to our property, but there's a corridor of conservation space there that connects to the conservation fields there, and there's an offset... an offset from that conservation land, which is the limit of where we can build. So we had that surveyed. We know where that, there's, it's staked now. The other limits are the, are Grimes Lane and the wetlands between our property and Foster Street, which are pretty easy to identify. So that's where we are with that. We're waiting for, for the RFP to be finished. And we have added two units at the Hager Homestead. We've added two units to the subsidized housing inventory. And if, I have a list of all of the houses, if you want me to go through that, but I don't think you do.
All right. Thank you both Angus and Bartlet for, for those comments on the two goals. Another goal is to support affordable housing programs. Now, one of the housing programs has been around since the inception of the trust itself. It is a Littleton Rental Assistance Program, also called LRAP. So last year, during fiscal year 24, we were able to assist 15 households, providing up to $250 a month in rent for the year. And then this year, we did expand the amount. We work on this program with Liz and Amy in Elder Human Services, and so they are the folks on the ground who really get to talk with the residents and understand what the housing situation is. And so at their recommendation, we increased the amount from 250 a month to $500 a month. So for fiscal year 2025, our budget was $120,000, and that, at $600, excuse me, $6,000 a year, we're able to serve 20 families for the fiscal year 2025. The second program that we have for affordable housing is related to a grant that we received by the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities. So we received this money thanks to a grant that was written by our town planner and Select Board Chair, to be able to use this funding to issue small grants to town residents. These small grants, you may have heard, are able to be used for qualifying projects, to qualifying households for critical home repairs. And the whole purpose of this is to enable residents to be able to stay in their homes longer. So since we enacted this particular program in January, we have been able to work with EHS and Building Commissioner and approve three different projects for residents in our town. The first two projects were for stairlift installations, and the third project is for a needed deck to be replaced. So we find that that is all worthwhile money to be funding those particular projects. I'll touch base on the financials real quick, and that is to say that you have these available to you as well. So the financials provided are for the trust since it started, and you can see on the document that it gives you all of the revenue that has been brought into the trust. 93% of it is coming from CPC, and that money came in through matched dollars of several planning board projects and other, other donations. And then the expenditures have been outlined by project. So we know that since its inception, the Affordable Housing Trust has spent $218,000 for the LRAP program. The one year, fiscal year ending 2022, had the largest amount probably related to COVID and, and the need that was happening during that timeframe. The other projects, as mentioned earlier, are the Tehadawan Road, where the parcel was acquired, and then we have the Durkey Farmhouse Project underway as well, which is going to be looking to spend some of the dollars that are currently in the fund, depending on what that future project looks like. So as of right now, there is $1.1 million in the Affordable Housing Trust, intended only for affordable housing projects. And to the document, the housing log that Bartlet mentioned, that's also in your packet. It outlines various projects that we have already completed for affordable units, and then the projects that are teed up. One that was brought into, into light just last Thursday at the Planning Board meeting is Dean Lane. So Dean Lane is a street Cooper Farm development. The developers had, did not build out the final parcel there that is supposed to be for affordable housing, and so they are working, as we understand it directly, with Habitat for Humanity to be able to provide that parcel to them for the building of an affordable unit. So the one ask that we had, and I think it's more of a clarification at this point, the one ask that we had of the Select Board was that in consideration of any town-owned property that could be at some point used for affordable housing, that would be a tremendous asset to the, the projects that we could, we could have built out, created. And so two of the, the houses, one at 31 Shattuck Street, and the other one that's owned by the Water Department at 242 King Street, we had sent a letter last fall in regard to whether or not those homes could be deed restricted. And so it's my understanding that, and I just wanted to confirm this, that the town intends to use proceeds from the sale of 31 Shattuck Street to pay down the sewer debt. So I just wanted to make sure that that is correct, or is it still possible to have that house be considered for deed restriction?
It's going to be, debt will be paid, paid down.
Okay, all right. So, and then with 242 King Street, I presume that's a conversation with?
Water Department.
The Water Department, thank you. So with that said, do you have any questions?
I'll defer to Matthew.
Anything, Matthew? Matthew and I both sit on the board, so.
Yeah, so you guys all know it all.
We already heard this presentation.
You lived it.
Yes. The budget, the 1.1 doesn't, that's after all the expected LRAP expenses?
So that 1.1 is as of January 14th, 2025. So Michelle, the town accountant, and I synced up everything, and so that's what we had as of that day. And so any expenses that are on the financials are what, what that is through.
Right, but that doesn't, so my question is, so if we, the Affordable Housing Trust is basically committed to paying rent for the remaining or the fiscal year, so that number's really slightly higher because there's money that's already committed?
That is correct. Yep.
I guess I'm curious among, between your priorities, there seems to be a balance between building new housing and helping folks that are already in existing housing continue to be able to afford where they are. Do you have, does the trust have a sense of how they want to split those two priorities in terms of their time and, and their expenditures?
I would say no. We have had numerous conversations over the course of the last eight months, specifically with regard to, to those priorities. And I believe that the trustees really want to be able to help families in need in every situation, and that's why we will continue to fund the LRAP program as long as possible. And when the notion came up that we were hearing, especially through our senior, through a forum that we had specifically geared toward senior housing, what we heard is people would want to stay in their homes if, if they could, but there are certain obstacles or, or challenges to be able to do that, or they really wanted something that could be affordable to them, but given the way the affordability finances work, it's very challenging for a lot of folks, especially if they have assets, to be able to do that. So we, we bantered around the idea of being able to help specifically seniors or, or folks who are financially in need to be able to stay in their home, to age in place.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yep.
Thanks.
So one, I'll, I'll expand on that a little bit, having helped write the grant for the, the, the small grant home repair. The CPC money cannot be used to help residents stay in their homes, where it can be used for the rental assistance. So the only source of funding we have for the small, small grant is, is that grant?
Outside grant.
Is that outside grant?
There's a podcast episode about this, by the way, if anybody is interested in learning more.
So, so I, we haven't explored it more, I mean, the grant was for two years. I assume when the funds are running low, we will reapply.
Yeah, I would think it's also a question of, yeah, is there any land in the pipeline to be developed versus, you know, or are there any grants in the pipeline? And you just have to adjust accordingly based on the landscape.
Exactly. Yes, and with that said, for any residents out there who might be watching this, and if you need something repaired or done in your house to help keep you in your house, please talk to Amy in EHS, and she can get you started on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, George Sanders, 672 Gray Road. I have a question. Do you have a qualm here for the trust?
Yes.
Was it posted?
Yes, the joint meeting.
Yes.
It was posted?
Yes.
Okay. When was it posted?
Oh, let's see, George, at 4:00 PM on 4/3/25.
4/3/25? Okay.
Thank you. Public input.
Hello, my name is Eric Vandermark, 290 Goldsmith Street. I've been there for less than a year now, I just moved in.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Thanks. Good and question mark. The reason, actually, why I walked back in was because of a comment that Rob had said, he had somebody spoke with one of you about the Goldsmith 50. Part of why I moved on Goldsmith Street was because I knew it was, or at least I thought it was going to be 25 miles an hour, and I live right in front of the school. You made a comment before of, you're older, so you'll drive the speed limit. I'm 40, and I've always driven the speed limit. My parents hate following me places because I drive the speed limit. So that's why I kind of expected living there. I also just had my first son. And I just ask for enforcement, because there's a lot of new families in that little area, and I don't want anything to happen. And I didn't expect to, I'm tired in the neighborhood, but it's just going to come out, so. Even with his proposal of driving slower, just enforcement, I think would be the biggest thing, because I follow rules, I expect others to follow too, is why we all agree to live together in these kind of places. And I could get an army of people to come here and also voice support for this too, because all of my neighbors said the same sort of thing. And I know they're speeding, just trying to fall asleep at night. I mean, if you want to raise money, have cops there, you'll raise so much money so quickly, especially going at like 3:00 or 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning. There is people that are always speeding there back and forth. So that's all you have to do. You don't need whatever studies or whatever, just be there. And that's, that's all I wanted to say, like I said, I didn't plan anything, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I want to support Eric. There were two other people, well, there were several other people that I spoke with on the other side of Goldsmith, that cross Goldsmith, that universally what he's saying is repeated. Two people in particular stand out where I literally spent disproportionate amount of time in their homes, and part of their soundbites was, and these were on the same day within an hour, I'm nearly getting hit in the crosswalk in the last two weeks, two times. This is somebody, Goldsmith, tell J or, I don't know how to pronounce that, and right at the intersection of Lake and Goldsmith. And these are people that quite frankly are, are not nimble. And I was really taken, and because Eric speaking up tonight, I just want to say, it is a soundbite that exists out there with Goldsmith. In fact, during the public hearings, which I watched, referencing the safety zones, there was kind, being kind, uncomfortable laughter with references to the Goldsmith 50. Known problems should be dealt with and not be left to residents being, really risking themselves. Everything that can be done to enforce our speed limits needs to be put under consideration of how can it be improved. I've spoken with, offline with Lieutenant Landry, who says that speeding is, you know, one of the biggest problems. And so I don't want to belabor this, but I also don't want it to appear that it's just something unique to Eric's perspective. There are many people that can come forward, and if we need to make our presence known by way of calling the police department, then I think just communicate that to us, and maybe it's already been done now, to throw that out to us of when we see something, say something in order to protect ourselves. So thank you.
George Sanders, 672 Gray Road. Mr. Chairman, I have questions on the high school, that's on the agenda here, with regards to the roof and the boilers. Do we know whether or not the town is going to have to foot enter the bill of the cost on this in replacing the roof and, and the boilers? And if so, do we have a approximate amount of money that we're looking at, that the town is going to have to contribute to it? And when would this take place in terms of replacing the roof and the boilers?
So I can try that. So, so George, so what this is, is an application, what the board voted on earlier today was to submit an application to the MSBA for repairs, that would be replacement of the two boilers and the roof at the high school. So typically, we, we always hope that the application will be accepted the first time around, but much like our application for Shaker Lane School, the first round, it wasn't accepted. So we will probably, if we don't, if we aren't successful the first time around, we will come back again. So this is not intended to pay for the entire cost of, of that improvement. So I can't remember what the numbers are offhand, or for that matter, what MSBA will also reimburse us for this project. It really depends upon how many other projects they have in the queue at that time. But it was important, when we talked about this with the Select Board and the Finance Committee at our Super Budget Saturday session, that if we were to do anything along these lines, we needed to put forward this application to the MSBA. That deadline's coming up, and so the schools have stepped up and are asking both the Select Board and the Fin, and, and the School Committee to, to move forward with that.
So there's a likelihood, yeah, we're going to have to contribute to that, but where's the source that they're looking for the town to contribute? Is it within the budget?
It's all, it's been part of the capital plan, George. So what the thought was, that we knew it was in the capital plan, and so as, as, as we're beginning to plan for that, there's certain, you know, there's certain projects that if, if the town wants to buy a, a fire truck, for example, or there really isn't a place that you can get funding for a fire truck. That just has to be either borrowed or taken out of the Capital Stabilization Fund. These projects, on the other hand, you can apply for an MSBA project. It's competitive process, but to prepare for something that the schools had on their list of, of an out-year project, they wanted to put those applications in now. So I think I.
I, I, excuse me, forgive you, but I understand what they are doing. But my concern is that the likelihood, the state is not going to give us the 100% the cost for that. So what I'm asking, what planning has the town done and the School Department with regards to where we're going to support? regards to where are we going to support this? How are we going to support it? Are we going out for loan for this or what's going to take place?
Sure, it answers, George. That's, it's a little too early to tell. Uh, our first step is to apply for the, for the program.
So if you look in, um, the packet from last meeting, we voted the addendum to the financial plan and it had in there, um, a schedule of capital improvements and funding, right? And the school roof is in there. Um, I don't remember the plan for the exact amount or the expected reimbursement from MSBA. We are prepared, if it was approved this year, to go forward from money that we have set aside, or if it's not for five years, you know, we have it in the plan and we have a potential funding source from the cap, capital stabilization, um, based on our estimate on how much it's going to cost. So we have, I mean, this isn't a new project. We've been aware of this, the high school roof coming for several years now.
Yeah, I know we've done temporary repair up there.
And, and we are planning for it, um, as, to pay for it more or less out of, the plan is if everything goes as, as we anticipate, it would be paid out of the capital stabilization funds.
Okay, because I think we as citizens, this is a major item. This is not a small item here. When you start talking about replacing that roof on that school up there
Yes.
and the boilers. So we need to be kept abreast as to what expenditures that we are up against here.
Right, so
Because we got a real tight budget. I can tell you that, we got a real tight budget here.
We're very aware of that. And, um, there isn't a plan like, you know, if, if MSBA didn't come through this year, we're not necessar, we're not replacing the roof this year. We have some, some time, you know, we'll do minor repairs before it gets critical, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Members' updates, you want to start, Matthew?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, um, mention both the public session for the, um, town hall planning, which is I believe April 9th.
Yes, 7 o'clock.
And the second, um, the second session for the orchard, which is I believe April 14th.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Karen?
Uh, I attended the Upper Middlesex Women's Commission on the Status of Women. Um, I wanted to thank them for hosting a round table and coffee hour, um, last week. It was, um, good to meet women from all over the region, um, who are all thinking about, um, issues that are impacting us disproportionately. The sustainability, Sustainability Committee met and they, we were introduced to Michelle Zelenka. That's the, um, the regional energy manager that we, um, are working with through the, uh, through that grant. Um, and so that was great. Looking forward to lots of good things happening from, from that perspective. Um, and did you get to see Legally Blonde?
I did.
Okay, so I'll let you talk about Legally Blonde because I was unfortunately unable to make it. And I wanted to thank folks who, uh, came to office hours and hope that they'll come next time I hold them, which is next month, I think.
So, uh, as, I attended Legally Blonde, uh, Saturday night. It was an incredible show. The kids did an amazing job. It was great to see the number of people out in attendance. Uh, the auditorium seemed to be very full, um, and everyone seemed to enjoy themselves. So congratulations to all the performers. And I'm looking forward to seeing, I haven't heard what the musicals are for next year, so I'm looking forward to what, what's coming up. Um, on Sunday, I attended the Indian Association of Greater Boston's. They had it together as one meeting. It, they're short for IAGB. It was a great event, um, that they sponsored to get, uh, different communities together and, um, and IAGB actually does a lot for fundraising and support of various charities and things in the neighborhood that I wasn't aware that they, uh, were involved in. So it was very good. I believe they're going to try and become more public and do those types of things annually. I wanted to remind people of the Patriots Day events on, uh, April 19th. I believe most of them will be at Fay Park, though the some might be at Liberty Square. I assume everything's going to be on the town website and to check for that.
There's also a podcast episode about that. Available on Spotify.
Um, and for those that aren't aware, uh, our esteemed Assistant Town Administrator is, uh, turned in his, uh, is moving on to Concord effective
May 9th.
May 9th, and I wanted to thank him for all of his service and thank him for all the work on the budget and staying through town meeting. And I think we have someone that's going to answer all the questions that Tom
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, that's right. Coming to that later in the agenda, right? Thank you.
That's all I have. Do you have any updates on the projects?
Uh, let's see, uh, Mr. Chair, a couple of things. Uh, we're working on the final change orders for 36 King Street. Uh, looking to, um, for occupancy in the May-June timeframe for that. As far as the center on Shattuck Street, um, we are looking at the furniture, uh, delivered on Patriots Day, which is April 21st. Also pool tables and exercise equipment is going to be delivered in that same timeframe. And the ribbon cutting is, uh, I believe 1:00 PM on May 16th. So, um, we're putting plans together for that, getting a tent and all the other arrangements on that front. Shaker Lane School Committee, we have, um, our community outreach subcommittee meeting is on Thursday, uh, I think at 3:00. One of the things that we're doing is, you'll note on, uh, the front of the warrant that you have in front of you, we put in a QR code, so everyone in town will be receiving the warrant, um, be advertising the session just before town meeting, which is going to be taking place in the cafeteria from 6:00 to 7:00. And, uh, we, uh, use the cover, uh, as a, also a way to advertise, uh, a little bit about the project and so that people can be, use the QR code and go directly to, uh, the town website. Next, Shaker Lane School Building Committee is, uh, Wednesday, April 16th. And, uh, we're prepping, uh, we're going to be prepping especially for that presentation. We should be about a 15-minute presentation. And the remainder of the meeting will be questions and answers regarding the project.
Thank you.
550 King Street, uh, this Thursday is going to be the, uh, the first meeting of a weekly construction meeting of updates from them. As you, as you know, the infrastructure will start to be installed, uh, as, uh, this week, if, uh, you'll see that happening. We're also going to, there were conversations, uh, with the, uh, with the owner of 550 King Street on, um, potential accelerating, uh, uh, construction schedules instead of taking so, so, so far out, seven or eight years, maybe look at opportunities to, uh, to increase that on, on, on his end. And on a different note, uh, in regards to the, uh, the closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center that has caused a lot of, a lot of the 13 communities to run through their overtime budgets for as a result of, uh, needed EMS services. Chief McCurdy has worked extremely hard, uh, to get the attention of the, of administration and finance through the, through the governor's office and the governor's office. And, uh, working with our state delegation in all, in all the communities, uh, to get funding for that over the next two years. And that ask was approximately $10 million. That also included an evaluation of the regionals EMS services. Uh, we just got notification on Friday that, uh, the governor had put in a supplemental budget, uh, $10 million in the supplemental budget for EMS. It, uh, it is not, uh, unfortunately, it is not primarily for this region. It is for statewide and particularly, uh, there was a, uh, a community, there was Norwood, which is, which was adversely affected approximately four years ago with the closure of, from a flooding of a Stewart Hospital that never really, that never opened up again. And they've got, and they've suffered probably $4 to $5 million in, uh, lost, uh, uh, overtime and things of that nature that they've had to pay out. And, uh, so in order for us to be able to be eligible, it has to be, can't be going forward about what you anticipate to lose, it actually has to be what you've lost. So, and it, and it's statewide. So we'll keep you apprised of, uh, of all of that going forward.
I have one more that I forgot to mention. I have asked, um, uh, the direct employees of the select board, the fire chief, uh, town administrator, police chief to do their self-assessment for their reviews. The, um, um, the, the, as everyone knows, the reviews are in two sections. There's the personnel aspects and the goals aspect. I've asked them to do the personnel aspect so that we can review them before the election. So basically the sitting board gets to review, um, our employees, um, so I've asked them to have their sections done by our next meeting and then we can, in the following two weeks, do our assessment and give it back at, sometime after that. So, um, expect that to be coming out at our next meeting. Town meeting.
Okay, um, so, um, so for the members, uh, Matthew, you're not here, but we have physical copies of, uh, the warrant. We were able to, um, reduce the amount of articles down from, I think it was 39, down to 33. So from, um, they're being in the process. So as we go through this, we have, um, we keep a spreadsheet of the various votes that were taken and we also have assignments, um, for the board, um, as to who might be speaking to particular articles. So, um, um, so the, the ask here is we go through each of the 33 articles and, um, you know, we can go through each one and if the, if a member wants to be able to speak to a particular article, uh, we can put your name down for this. We've got presenters, if, if, um, if someone needs to present on a certain article, many of these articles will probably be consent articles, but there are others that will, um, have more formal presentations associated with it. So, um, annual report really, you typically don't, uh, if I could get into it, they typically don't do anything on that front. Bills of prior years, since, um, we don't, currently don't have any that are becoming forth, I wouldn't ask you to put anything there. But, um, maybe we start with Article 3, which is the operating budget. So maybe, any takers, uh, among the three of you, or if you want to volunteer Chuck or Gary? I know Gary has typically done it in the past.
I'll take that one or Gary can have it. You put my name and then I'll negotiate with Gary.
Okay.
Gary should take the LCTV.
Okay. So revolving funds, it's fairly performa, just with, with the limits, you know, the spending limits are on, on, um, our revolving funds. So it's really
Yeah. You want it or?
No, I'd probably, you should stick with it if you're doing budget.
Alright. So, uh, next two are the water and sewer budgets.
Any volunteers? I hear Chuck.
We'll put Chuck down for those two. Okay. The next few, uh, capital items from available funds, um, I misplaced, I don't have the articles in front of me. I think, actually, that's not it. Uh, so, um, the next few are all ca, you know, sort of capital related items, so I don't know if anyone has any strong feelings about, about that, that they'd like to speak.
You can put my name on them, I'm just going to defer to you.
Okay, that's fine, that's, that's fine. I'll put Matthew down for these, uh, next set. The next article, um, sorry, the, uh, Article 11 was an, is an article that, um, I'm sorry, not Gary. Article 11 was an article, uh, that we needed to, uh, put in because we, we wanted to match the borrowings, um, for, or at least allow for there to be variable borrowing terms and betterment terms. So this allows us to do that. It's fairly straightforward. My guess is that's probably a, um, you know, consent agenda item. So, anyone?
Sure.
Okay. It's legal, Karen, so maybe
I'll be the brave person who, uh, who volunteers for the probably a consent agenda item.
Okay. So 12 and 13 will take more time. That's, um, the special legislation, um, and the surplusing of 37 Shattuck Street, the building we're in right now.
Why are you looking at me like that?
That's a chair thing, if I've ever heard one.
I thought it was a Chuck thing. I would sign one to Chuck and the other one to Gary since they're not here. Yeah, go ahead. I don't care. I'll take them.
Okay, Mark. Thank you. Okay, um, next one is the, the transfer custody and control for the Lot 107A at the orchard. This is
That's Matthew.
That's going to be Matthew, okay. Uh, sorry, keep putting Gary. Okay, uh, next three are zoning. So, um, I think the, the board, um, did not take any vote on this, so I don't know if you want to assign anyone under these circumstances. Uh, so that's Articles 15, 16, and 17.
I don't know if it matters for you, but I don't think Jeff Yates, Jeff Yates won't be doing the presentation from the planning board. I think it's going to be Daryl.
Daryl, okay. Is Anna still here?
No.
Okay, okay.
I know Jeff's not going to be at town meeting.
Oh, okay, well, then it'll be really hard for him to do it now, wouldn't it? Okay, alright, well, we'll just erase that for the time being. And, uh, okay, that's fine. Alright. Uh, classification compensation.
That's a Gary.
Gary, yeah. Okay. Capital stabilization fund, this is a, um, I think our, uh, contribution to the capital stabilization fund, so.
Sure.
Karen, is that?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, um, the next one is a new fire engine, so this is a transfer from capital stabilization for $1.3 million to buy a new fire truck.
Um, you want it or I'll take
Either way.
Karen can have it.
Yep. For to steal.
Okay, um, I think the, um, the next two are transfers into the school building stabilization fund, Article 21, Article 22, uh, transfer into debt exclusion stabilization fund.
Why don't we give them to Chuck?
Chuck, sounds good.
Are those transfers that are a result of the fiscal policy committee?
Yeah, just fiscal policies in general.
Okay.
And then, right
Want them?
No.
Okay.
Not really, it's fine.
And then, of course, tied to that is the actual use of the debt exclusion stabilization fund when we take monies, uh, that's, it's basically inside the levy to, uh, reduce the impacts on costs outside the levy. And sign Chuck to that one too, if you want.
Sounds good.
Okay.
23 and 24, or just 23?
Uh, why don't we give them both? I'm feeling generous.
Okay, 24, transfer into the stabilization fund, okay? Okay, we're getting there. Alright. The next one, the next two are CPC related articles. Who's the, who's our board member rep to the CPC?
I'll take them. I don't know if I am or not, but I'll take them.
Okay. Okay. Next two, establish some, uh, new, uh, revolving funds. There's actually three that we're introducing for the EHS with the new building and then the Long Lake Revolving Fund, uh, which we've been working on with Long, well, with the Clean Lakes Committee, but specifically this is for the Long Lakes, um, benefit for the Long Lake.
So do you want to give Gary the first one and Karen the second?
Yeah.
And Karen can take the Clean Lakes Maintenance Needs one too.
We'll do, okay. Um, let's see. Amending of prior town, uh, town meetings. I believe this was a vote on the sewer, uh, side where there were some, uh, purchases that were made for the sewer system, for purchase of, um, the house where the treatment system is, as well as the design work. This basically frees up some money, so it's basically a sewer-related article.
You want it, Matthew, or do we give it to Chuck?
Um, why don't you give it to Chuck to keep it's, to keep it, um, consistent?
Okay. Uh, funding of collective bargaining agreements right now.
I'd give the next three to Gary.
Mm-hmm, okay. Alright, we can do that. And that, um, that should do it then. That's it. Uh, that's, so basically with that, we will save it. And, uh, just to ask you, if you could, go back and, uh, vote to assign, the, the motion there to vote to assign the, the articles.
Okay. Vote to assign the May 6, 2020, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Okay. Vote to assign the May sixth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting articles to select board members as assigned at the April seventh, twenty twenty-five select board meeting.
Second.
Moved by Karen, second by Matthew. All in favor? Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Marks and I. I think we are very generous in not giving more to Chuck and Gary.
Very nice.
Minutes.
I have no corrections to make.
Me neither.
Okay.
Moved that the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the select board meetings on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five and March tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by Karen, second by Matthew. All those in favor? Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Marks and I. Want to make the last motion, Matthew?
I move that we adjourn tonight's select board meeting.
Second.
Moved by Matthew to adjourn, second by Karen. All those in favor? Karen?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
And Marks and I. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Matthew, for your remote participation.
Good night, Littleton.
Thank you.